Very good. The clock on the wall seems to indicate seven o'clock. So, with that said, welcome to the Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board. We're being recorded, as always, by Chelmsford Telemedia. So, with that, the first order of business is our annual reorganization, which we, by tradition, always change the officers around, which is probably a good thing for any town board. So, with that said, I will entertain nominations for the chair.
I would like to nominate Mr. Cole for chair.
Second. Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Cole. Do we have a nomination for anybody else?
Is Mr. Cole upset?
Yes.
I'll take it.
He says he will take it. Very good. That said, I think we take it to a vote. All in favor?
I can make a motion to close nominations.
Well, yes, I think we've just done that, by the lack thereof of any others. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Step on up. You're it.
Right.
I enjoyed seeing you next to me.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
You get the big boy chair.
Are your feet gonna hit the ground?
No, they don't hit the ground, let me tell ya. Make a short time.
Okay, all right. And if you would...
Oh, I gotta shut my phone off before it starts ringing.
If you would entertain further nominations.
Okay, we got further nominations coming up.
Vice Chair.
Get the Vice Chair. Well, anybody like to make any nominations?
I would like to nominate Henry.
Second that.
Okay.
I'll accept it.
You accept it? Okay. Everybody wanna... All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye. Congratulations. All right, the third one's going to be the clerk. Any nominations?
I'd like to sit next to you for about five minutes. I'd like to nominate Mike.
And I will accept. I will accept.
We got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, we're done with that. Let's finish the music away. Music stopped. Everybody sit down.
Yeah.
There we go.
Liaisons next, please?
Yep, yep. Once they get seated, we'll jump onto that. Nope, sorry, Donald.
Welcome to the other side of the table.
I know.
He's gotta grab his chair.
We gotta get his... You gotta take your... Oh, Mike, Mike.
I think there's something wrong with that seat.
All right.
All right, here we go. Representative and liaison appointments. Community Preservation Committee.
That's Henry now, isn't it?
That's Henry.
Henry's been doing it. You wanna keep doing it?
I'll keep doing it, but the only thing, way I can keep doing it with the North Middlesex government is to have George still being the citizen, which I think he is, 'cause sometimes they fall on the same night.
The citizen rep for Nemco.
Nemco, yeah.
George.
Okay. Housing Advisory. You guys were talking. You two wanna do it together?
We'll do it.
Got it. Tim and Donald. Village Square Strategic Action Plan Committee. That's Mike.
Final Square.
Yep, sorry.
North Chelmsford.
Northern Middlesex, that's gonna be Henry again.
With George as a citizen.
All right, liaisons for the non-voting stuff. BPAC. Wanna give that to Hank?
Yeah, let's give that to Hank.
Yeah, right.
Economic. Donald's taking that again. Senate Village.
He's on that as well, so that makes sense.
Historic Dan, you want that again?
I keep that.
All right, we're done with that. All right, moving on.
How'd you get on that?
Is Steve Yonley here yet?
No, he didn't say he was gonna be late, so I said, "There's other things we can just go ahead."
Okay, we'll shift him down until he gets here. All right, we'll go to 156 North Road for an A&R.
I need to recuse.
Oh, okay. Note that Donald's recusing himself. Colleen?
For your records and for the record here, Douglas Housler, Lampert Housler, and Rodman representing Kelly Ree Alley, who is the owner of 156 North Road. There was a last-minute letter from Christine that came in late this afternoon, and that has to deal with the... She's okay, according to her letter, she was okay with the parcel A, but she wants us to reflect a drainage easement area, which is of record of the sub, the original subdivision plan.
Yep.
The reason that we did not include it in this particular draft is because our... We'll be coming before you in a month, not with, through Ms. Alley, but with other people, for the property on the other side of Charles Way for a subdivision. And at that point in time, we're gonna be dealing with drainage situations on Charles Way, which has never been accepted as a public way. And that likely will affect what that drainage easement, A, if it's even needed, and B, what will be the extent of it. But to satisfy the town engineer, we're happy to amend the plan to reflect the easement, drainage easement that she's asked for in the letter. What we anticipate doing is parcel A would become what I call superfluous for Ms. Alley, and she may wind up selling that parcel to the developer who's doing the rest of the subdivision behind her. That may, that's a possibility. Nothing, no P&amp;S exists, though. Other than that, it's an A&R lot. Everything else is compliant.
There is one letter.
The Christine's.
So, there's no special permits on this one, right?
No.
An A&R.
Just an A&R.
Okay. From Christina, Town Engineer, subject A&R Plan of Land, Charles Way, and 156 North Road. Dear members, this office has reviewed the A&R plan by Farnsworth Engineering Associates dated March 25th, 2019. This office has some concerns with a parcel separation. It appears that the new line of division that is shown to split the lot may be going through the detention basin. The recorded subdivision plan shows a drainage easement for the detention basin. The easement line is not shown on the A&R plan, nor are there any features of the detention basin. If the intent of the plan is to isolate certain features of the detention basin, then the details and infrastructure of the detention basin, as well as the drainage easement, should be shown on the A&R plan. This office asks that this board approve this plan, with the condition that the plan be revised to show the details requested above. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Sincerely, Christina Papadopoulos.
All right. Well, with that being said, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve A&R.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. May I do a point of order?
Yes.
Things are confusing enough for people of my age.
Good job, Doug. You got us.
I've always got your back, Scott. Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Good. All right. Moving on again. 5965 Princeton Street Endorse Mylars.
Which are here, and there's one other.
Yeah, there is a letter.
There's a letter.
If I may, again, from the town engineer. Subject VB File 2018-04, 59 to 64 Princeton Street Site Plan. Dear members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Howard Stein Hudson Associates, consisting of nine sheets dated January 7th, 2019, revised through April 10th, 2019, and a supplemental data report dated January 2019, revised through April 2019. This office is still waiting for a stamped existing condition plan, which was submitted under separate cover. The proposed plans meet the requirements of this office sufficiently, and the plans have been revised accordingly. We recommend endorsement of the Mylars. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Sincerely, Christina Papadopoulos.
That's it. Go and entertain a motion to endorse the Mylars.
I will move that we endorse the Mylars.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, one opposed. Okay, passes. That's down. All right. Moving on again. 152 Turnpike Road.
So, hopefully, everybody's had a look at the...
Review the, and ratify the decision.
Did we have any decision from council, Colleen?
We did. He reviewed it, and he put in his two cents. It was sent out again and asked for any comments.
Yep.
We didn't receive them, so this is, what we have in front of you is the official decision.
I don't have it.
We don't have it yet.
Oh, they're in the back. They're gonna pass it out. Sorry. I'm gonna put my paper on the table.
We'll take a minute so we can read this real quick, and if anybody got any questions on it.
There's no votes to be taken or anything?
Colleen, is there anything that shows what was changed by council?
It was in the email.
Yeah, the email was a red line.
And it was mostly grammatical. Really wasn't a lot of substantive... I think it was, the only other thing that was added was the letter from the housing authority, if it's illegal to only advertise for 60 days, or whatever it said in there for the 55-plus, that that would be struck if that was deemed illegal.
Do you have that email on your computer?
Of the red line?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Okay. You're gonna say throw it up on the thing so we can look at it?
I did review it. It made sense to me. It was essentially grammatical.
It was kinda surprising. Evan's spent a lot of time putting this together.
Kinda, kinda would like to see it, but if Mike says it's okay, I'll take Mike's word on it. All right.
Yeah, this is basically what you emailed us. I've already gone through this, then.
Exactly.
I looked at this earlier today, too, so...
We can sit in front of the computer.
We need to make a motion to endorse the Mylars?
No, we do.
Or just endorse the Mylars?
No, we just...
Just ratification. Yeah, just ratify. You can talk to our lawyer friend over there.
We don't, we don't really need a motion here, but I think it probably makes sense. I would, I would move that we approve the certificate of decision as it's been presented.
Okay, perfect. Can we get a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed?
At the end, I'll have things for you to sign.
Okay.
Don't go running away.
Okay. All right. Moving on again.
There's another decision in the...
Yeah, you have the letter and the... 278, 282 Mill Road. Review and ratify the decision on that as well.
It's just a applicability, because we have problems with the structure itself.
This is not approval of the project. It's just says, yes, they can use the big bay odd. Why, why does the findings and decision reference the C.O.I. when the application references the bay odd? First page, up at the top.
Yep.
Business, amenity, overlay district.
Yeah, I mean, shouldn't that...
Well, the bay odd includes the C.O.I.
I understand that, but shouldn't the findings and decision be in reference to the bay odd, not the C.O.I.?
I think, I think the findings and decision under, right under the main topic, has the applicability of C.O.I. through the bay odd. So, it's to the overlay.
By the way, page two, item eight, has Boad, not bay odd.
Yep, okay. Good one. Anybody else see anything?
And you probably also wanna take my name off it as chairman.
Yep. You wanna do a motion on this one, just like the other one?
Uh, yeah, this one does need a motion, I believe. Move that we, we accept the certificate of decision, as has been drafted with the changes that have been mentioned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody unanimous? Get that one out of the way.
So, you're gonna sign the bottom of that one?
Sign the bottom of...
Over the back. It's gonna have you, you're gonna put your...
The previous one, too, you're gonna change the chairman's name.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, but the vote was taken under Mike's chairmanship.
And I think that's why we left it that way.
Yeah.
Evan and I discussed that, so I think...
From a technical point of view, I don't think it particularly matters.
Get it? Okay.
I have the originals here, Mike, so don't worry about it.
Okay, good. So, we got, we got Mr. Yonley just popped in. You wanna get him out of the way so he can go home?
Wait a minute. We wanna see that again. We're gonna get that on camera. You running upstairs?
No. Brisk walk. We'll call it that. Sorry for being a few minutes late. My apologies on that. So, street acceptance is the annual rite of spring here. I'm sure in your packet you have five, we have five streets this year.
Yep.
Four of which fall into the program we started through the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager a couple of years ago. That are older streets have been streets in town for many years, and we're just in the process of cleaning up paperwork. The other one, so those four, it's Galloway, Fay Street, Mission Road, and Hall Road. The other one, Alyssa Way, the board probably remembers is McKennedy Farm, over off River Neck Road, East Chelmsford. That is complete. It was supposed to be done last year as a newer subdivision, but there was some delay in getting all the documentation from the engineer and things like that. So, that stuff's all squared away at this point. So, I guess, I think in the packet there was, should have been a letter from the Board of Selectmen. It should be, should be read into record by the...
The letters all read?
No, you can just, just read one and just mention the five streets. That's the easiest thing to do, rather than read five separate letters.
I don't see a...
It's right on here.
The copies are all up here.
Yeah.
I have a copy if you need one.
Wait a minute. What do we do? Wait a minute.
What will have the copy?
There they are.
That's on the...
So, the very first one at the bottom?
The first letter you want?
You want the first one up, from Alyssa?
No, no, the bottom where it says, "Sign Letters."
Okay, from, from Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Right there.
Okay, and this will be the same language for all of them?
Yeah, so you can just mention all the...
Okay, let me, let me read this, then. Letter to the Planning Board from the Board of Selectmen. Subject, layout of Alyssa Way, and this will also include Fay Street, Galloway Road, Hall Road, and Mission Road. At a duly noticed meeting of the Board of Selectmen held on March 25th, 2019, the Board of Selectmen voted its intention to lay out these streets as public ways, as shown on the plans, which we have in the file here. The Board of Selectmen hereby submits the proposed layouts, as shown in the foresaid plans, to the Planning Board for its comment and recommendation pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81I. Please review said plan and plans and provide in writing your comments and/or recommendations within 45 calendar days, from the date of this letter relative to the acceptance of the layout of the, of the streets as public ways. Following the required notifications, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting by placing the foresaid layouts on the Selectmen's meeting agenda. At that time, the Selectmen will vote on whether or not to lay out each of these roads as public ways. An article has been included in the town meeting warrant for the acceptance of the layouts as town ways. Thank you for your cooperation. And Glenn Diggs?
Okay, with that said, do you wanna throw out a motion to accept his...
Do we have any, any questions on any of this at all? I did have one generic question, not pertaining to these particular roads. How many more do we have queued up for acceptance?
So, remaining there are 21. When we started this program two years ago, we've knocked off five or six a year. I figured it would be about a five-year process, so it looks like it's gonna be about five or six. The remaining on those 21 are very short, some of them less than a tenth of a mile, small cul-de-sacs, small cut-throughs into other, you know, towns, that type of thing. So, we should be able to knock off more of them, as opposed to like, you know, a Galloway Road that's, you know, almost a mile long type of thing. So, it should go fairly quick over the next couple of years.
Gotcha. Very good. All right, I guess I would move that we, that we accept these street acceptance drawings as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed?
Back to the Selectmen. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
You, Steve.
All right, next thing on the list. Where are we?
New public hearing.
New public hearings? There's no new public hearings.
We have anything from Route 40?
Anything from Route 40?
Our next meeting is tomorrow night, and they're gonna review tomorrow night the overlay, the draft of the overlay. And then also, we have a table of contents for the report, and have the, the groups gonna review how we're gonna develop the report, and then present it to the Planning Board.
Yeah, so is that the expectation of the Planning Board, a formal presentation, PowerPoint? I mean, what is the expectation of the Planning Board?
I would think, like you say, we'll do, do a formal presentation with a PowerPoint and everything, and just, just do it the way it needs to be done.
I think it's the most effective way to communicate what's been done.
Yeah, everybody will see what's going on, and put all the facts out there, and...
Yeah, it's gonna have all the, the actual, we were thinking about the bound document, Don, that we're gonna talk about tomorrow, is at the end have a bound document, all the meeting minutes in it and everything, so everything that was discussed, and all the references is all right there, so anyone can read.
Perfect. Transparency, that's what I like.
So, that's what we're gonna go through tomorrow night.
Yep, okay. All right, with that, we got new business, lighting standards update. Possible invite to Kelly Beatty.
Yeah, let me, let me speak to this one. I had a chat with Kelly Beatty last week. You may have noticed, those of you who tend to listen to NPR, that he was on the show talking about some legislation at the state level concerning lighting, and, you know, angles and light temperatures and such. And a lot has happened since we initially jumped into the, the business of, of controlling, you know, light temperatures and such. We, what was that, five or six years ago that we, we had around? And we had, we had Kelly in at that point. In our conversation, I suggested that he might wanna come in, give a presentation of what the state's up to, and what we might be able to do, because we might be able to get a little bit ahead of the state on here. I'll give you one or two bits and pieces of it. One of them is that they're, they're talking somewhat lower light temperatures than, than we have been discussing. We probably should have some conversations there.
The problem is, that you run into, is you lower the light temperatures, and then you end up with more light poles.
Yeah, you do, or they may.
It's a, it's a give and take.
Right. Anyway, it sounded to me as if it was a good conversation to have, and Kelly is as much an expert on that as anybody in the Commonwealth, so I thought we might wanna invite him in.
It sounds good. Can we reach out to Kelly and invite him in?
Absolutely. Is there any particular time you wanna, just at his convenience?
At his convenience.
Well, you know, you know when our meetings are.
Yeah. Whenever you can slide him into one of the future meetings. Very perfect. Okay. All right, next up, we get some appointments to fill on the Master Plan Committee.
Before we move on to that, I think it's important to acknowledge that, you know, that the, the auction happened last Friday.
Oh, yeah, yep.
On West Campus.
Yeah. It was sold. It was someone from Lexington, I believe.
Lexington.
For 3.2 million after the 10%, or something like that.
Right.
That was 2.95.
Well, it was 2.95, but then there was...
A 10% boost, then, okay.
Brilliant.
Yeah. Any ideas of what they're gonna do through you guys? Have you, have anybody heard?
I got to speak with the woman, and she happened, her name was Alice.
Yeah.
She happened to have a engineer and an architect with her, none of which, they haven't developed their LLC yet. But she did say that they build beautiful houses, and she wants to work with the town, and come up with a few different plans for the town's consideration. Sounds like there may not be a zoning change, but until we see a plan, we wouldn't know that.
Right, right. Well, they got some options there.
Yep.
Even under the conventional zoning, they get, get a few. Okay.
So, one important takeaway is that they have 60 days to close.
Right.
Just something to keep in mind as we go through the process here with possibly Route 40.
Right. Yeah, you don't wanna drag it out till they get stuck. Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Any more on that?
Are you, are you talking about committee?
Yeah, we're gonna do the committee, we're gonna do the committee appointments now?
Oh, I was thinking about committee interfaces, in terms of other committees.
Oh.
Yeah, I know, but you didn't talk about historical.
The what?
Historical Commission?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a meeting last night.
Oh, sorry.
That was my point.
All right, all right, yep.
Just a status report.
Yep.
Is still working with them on a proposal for historical preservation, for bonuses, bonus units for putting properties under historic preservation restrictions. As of right now, we're, we're looking at exactly the, a mapping, properties that would be, that could potentially be applicable, properties that have already been converted, and pulling back the accessory structure expansions.
Okay. That's good to hear. Yes, sir.
We're going forward.
Mrs. Chairman, can I ask you one question before we dive into the master plan? Just regarding receiving of the documents for our review?
Yep.
Is there any way, Colleen, maybe you can mention, can we extend that, so we can get the documents earlier? I know right now, the, it comes out of your office on Friday, and then like, this week, we had stuff coming Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah.
It's not giving proper time to review it. Huh?
What came Monday and Tuesday?
The live document, the live attachments, from, it came from you, 'cause your computer was Friday.
Yes.
My question is, can we, how soon do, when the applicants come in, how soon do they have to submit to get on the agenda for the following?
There's a lot of work that happens in between the time they submit and before you start seeing plans. So, Friday was a fluke, and I will tell you, I had a virus that started on Thursday.
Right.
And my email was down until late Monday. It affected other people in the building, so the live links were unable to be posted on the Friday, which I posted on Monday, and I sent to you as soon as I possibly could. I didn't feel that there was anything really questionable with the things that were before us at this point, so...
No, no, I'm not talking about just this week. I'm talking about just in general.
Yeah, I'm kind of agreeing with what Mike's saying.
It seems like it's a, it's a fire hose. We're trying to, we're dealing with our own businesses as well, and our own industry, and then we're dealing with these emails coming the final couple of days. I was just throwing out to the group, is it adequate time, or can we improve the time for the Planning Board to review the documents?
We used to always get them...
It's always the Friday before.
No, we used, we used to get them the Wednesday before. When Janet was doing it, we used to get them like on the Wednesday. And they were the, they were the paper plans, and they had to get mailed out and everything. We'd get them Wednesday, maybe Thursday, depending on how the mail worked.
I don't...
So, now it's all electronic, so I don't see...
I think she was trying to make the mail, but I remember getting them on Friday and Saturdays.
Where it's electronic now, it's just a matter of, you got your plans in, just hit your email and send them out the minute you get them.
It may, it may not be that easy. I appreciate that.
Right, I'm sure there's more to it than that.
And I'm not trying to create an issue. I was just saying, how soon does an applicant have to apply? Is it 14 days?
No, no, we need a month.
So, you need, so a month before, and we're receiving it three days before. Is there any way we can improve that for us, or?
Yeah, I'll need to sit with Evan and talk about it. I mean, I can, I can improve it during that, that week before. Any sooner, I don't have any responses. A lot of the times, the links that you get have already been modified due to departmental comments. So, I mean, I would talk with Evan. I'm not gonna promise anything to Shep, but earlier in that, in the week before the meeting, I could maybe do it on Tuesday.
Just some consideration.
Just so we have something we can, like Mike says, we're working seven days a week, a lot of us, and you get the thing on your phone, and as I said, as I said earlier, you're driving down the road trying to read the stuff on your phone. Probably not a good thing to do, but it's, you're crunching time all the time.
Yeah, I, I get it.
And the other, the other thing that I was gonna add to Mike's comment about that, if we have changes come up, like in this meeting, we're gonna ask somebody to, to change a plan or whatever, and give, give us an updated plan, if we could get that, like the following Wednesday, like the Wednesday before, or Thursday before, so we have time to look at that as well, instead of getting some of them things, we've been getting a bunch of them the night of the meeting handed to us, and that doesn't give us any time to read it.
And I totally get it, and Henry's made big points about that, so I'll give you who to talk to.
And it's not you. It's, it's coming, it's how you get them.
The week of the meeting, anything I get, you guys get immediately. The changes, that letter from Christina was sent to me at 4:00.
Yeah.
So, you know, she looked at it. She didn't have a chance to look at it last week. You know, they're doing, you know, she's doing street acceptances, whatever. So, the changes that you get during... that you get during the week here are because that's the first time we've seen it.
Right, so maybe going forward...
I can put a hard deadline on it and, and tell them...
And just tell them, if, if it comes in after this time, it's going to go to the next meeting.
That's, that's fine, if that's how you want to...
The easiest way to fix it.
Make a policy for that, that's fine.
Has the planning board ever had a policy on that?
I think so, it's kind of like a...
Yeah, we used to.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, something that's there, but nobody ever...
Because we get all these, I mean, you're absolutely right, I mean, so we get all these letters, and all of a sudden, the applicant wants us to read the letters into record, but we never even had an opportunity to review them, therefore, if they want the record, they want the record to reflect that we received these letters, I think the letters should be in by a certain day.
It's happened the night of the meeting, about five o'clock, they've sent them in as...
That's just unacceptable.
It's not Colleen's fault for that.
No, it's not Colleen's fault, so maybe we have a policy.
No, that has nothing to do with Colleen, that has to do with setting a, a require, a policy on how, how early you have to submit, if you want it included.
Well, and I, I do send out, my departmental comments are sent out the same way as my agendas, so there's links on those that go to the department heads, and there is a due date, usually it's the Friday before I need to send it out to the board, but then they, they come in, you know, as they can get to them, but yeah, I can certainly work on making it better to give the board more time.
Okay.
That's all, just appreciate that.
Everybody happy with that?
That's all.
No, I get it, I, I get it.
While we're cracking the whip, we'll throw one more out, meeting minutes?
Oh, we got a question.
Can we put a limit on like two or three weeks after the meeting to get the minutes, so they're still kind of fresh in our mind what we did and what we didn't do, not like three, four months?
Now, I can't promise, because things come up...
That is a concern.
But...
It, it should be.
It really is a concern.
If you do them like right away, and we can get them and it's...
I can't always do that, I'm sorry, but I will make a serious effort to do that.
Okay, that's all we can ask, all right, with that being said, why don't we go to the appointments, and we got a bunch of...
Interviews.
Interviews out here that, people that want to come up and tell us what they, what their names are and their qualifications and why they think we should have them on the Master Plan Committee, and we can start right with the first one, we got Tracy Cole up first.
Glenn?
Yep.
I think it would be good for us to kind of do a review of what to expect from your participation on that committee, so that these folks can speak to their abilities to participate in those ways.
Okay, you want to do that, that's, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right, hang on one minute, and we're going to tell you what we're going to expect of you. Go ahead, Nancy, you got the floor.
All right.
You haven't made a mission statement for this committee yet, if it's a whole rewrite or if you're going to touch on things, I mean, that hasn't been...
Well, no, actually, we, we have had some of that discussion.
We've had those discussions, so we do not believe that we're doing a from scratch plan, we believe that we will be reviewing and updating the previous plan, but what goes into, to these plans is a tremendous amount of research in terms of demographics and utilization within the town, and how the town compares with surrounding areas in the state and such, so there's a lot of research to be done, there's a lot of writing to be done, there's a lot of interviewing of many, many people and, and committee representatives, function representatives across the town, and there is a rather large job of compiling and selecting data out of that, and then developing. Well, that's why I'm trying to go through this, is it's a huge project and it's a time commitment, so it requires an assortment of expertise in terms of the members of the committee, we really, as, as the people selecting these individuals, we need to be aware of the need to get mixed backgrounds and, and skill sets and interests into, into the committee, because the interests that are represented, represented and expertise that's represented in those committee members is what will carry through in, in terms of the plan and the recommendations of the plan. The plan itself is, is not a requirements document, it is a recommendations document, and those recommendations are typically directed to various committees and departments throughout the town, for them to take, do analysis and take further action on as their analysis dictates.
Okay, anybody else got a?
What I, what I understood was, I believe you're going to, well, I'm not on the committee, so I really can't say, but from what I understood in our discussions, where the first thing you're going to do is go through it and see what still applies and what doesn't apply, before you start getting into huge data and all this other stuff, I think the first thing that's going to happen is it's going to be an overhaul, just to see where we are, where we thought we were going to be, and I think it's going to be something that develops as you're going along, but I don't think it's going to be the huge project it originally was.
Right.
No, no, I think it's an update, not a, not a from scratch by any means.
Yeah.
So, the last time that we did a, a master plan review committee was probably four years ago, in terms of doing a, a committee review of the, the actualization of the recommendations in that plan.
Implementation.
Whatever, yeah, it was, it was a review of the status of the implementation.
Yeah, it's a status review of the implementation.
I was on it.
I was on it.
I, I'm also thinking, we also mentioned too about a cover letter that's a guideline, not a law, because we get so many people...
It needs to be right up front, that it's absolutely recommend, recommendations, not requirements.
Right.
Yeah, it, it needs to be blatantly obvious, but I, I agree with you, Henry, is we have to find out what happened with the last recommendations, as, before we start, start going forward with it, yeah.
Can we, what's the makeup of the committee, can you review that again?
The makeup is, you have...
One selectman.
One selectman, one planning board.
No, two planning boards.
The planning board.
You have two at-large people really who have no connection with the town, just residents.
Previous, previous participants.
Oh, and then we had two previous participants.
Previous...
So, all those positions are already filled, right, every, those other positions?
All the other ones are filled, I think, right?
Selectmen and...
Yeah, right.
Okay.
The selectmen will wait until after the vote.
Yeah, after they get that organized.
All right.
One, one other thing I'd note is that these are public meetings, and there is no reason at all why people other than those who are appointed to the committees could go. In fact, I have every intention of being at almost all of them myself, just personally, so, and, and other people can do that too, and that, that actually gives you something of an advantage of, if there are particular areas in which you have, you, a particular individual out there, has expertise or a particular interest, you know, then things can be arranged so that you show up for those pieces, assuming that the, the chair, whoever that turns out to be, is, is willing, and they generally are, so...
Colleen, do you know if this committee gets a, an appointed secretary, in other words, do we get any support?
Yes, well, I don't see why you wouldn't.
There, there's a lot of writing to do, is what I'm thinking.
Probably be smart to.
I would think.
Yeah, okay, all right, with that being said, Tracy, why don't you come on up and give us your best shot?
Tracy Cole, 97, Turnpike Road. Give me my coffee. I don't bring a whole lot of extensive experience with town planning, all that kind of stuff. The only thing I really have to offer to the committee would be my love for the town, my interest in seeing the town go into the future, how and how much, I actually wrote something down, I don't know, I'd like to be able to help create a plan that works for both the town and the people, to the best of its ability, like I said, I don't bring a whole lot of experience with the whole government, how the government works, town government or planning or anything, but I'm convinced that with the guidance of the experienced people like George and the other members that were on the committee in the past, that we could bring Chelmsford into the future in the best way we possibly can, for both the town and the people, and I'd just be speaking from our layman's residence point of view, that's...
That's good.
That's an important point of view.
It is, it is.
It's a very important point of view.
A very important point of view.
All right.
Any questions for me?
No, I don't have any, anybody have any questions for?
No questions.
Are you on any other town committees at all?
No, this would be my first.
And are you a town rep at all?
No.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
She had mentioned a vision.
A vision.
You had a vision, right, you just mentioned somewhere in your presentation, there's a vision, possibly, do you have a vision for the town?
I don't, I would be able to, I think that my lack of experience, I'm hoping that the committee would see as a benefit, because I would be able to envision these issues or the, the plan with maybe a new site, sometimes you just need a brand new set of eyes to... I don't particularly have a vision of where I want to see the town, per se, it's a, I don't want to say it's a crap shoot, it's not crap, it's, that's not the word I'm looking for.
It may be closer to reality.
It's, it's ever-expanding, it's evolve, it's always evolving, and it always will evolve, and you just have to take it year by year and do what's best for the town and do what's best for the people, and take it as it comes, really.
Very good, anybody else?
Well, I'll, I'll make one comment, a, a very wise prior member of the Master Plan Committee told me that, on that, the committee 10 years ago, one of the most valuable members was somebody who had just never, ever done any of this before, so that's, that's something to consider, thank you, George.
I remember him saying...
Because you know he's listening.
Yeah, I know he's listening.
I, I've got a question, Tracy, how are you at, at doing computer research?
Careful how you answer that question.
Hint, hint.
I'm, I'm serious, because I know that I'm going to get a lot of it, and I'm wondering how to share it.
Yeah, no, I would say that I'm moderate, I'm not an expert, I'm not a novice, I'm kind of in the middle somewhere.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can do it, it might take me a little longer than some people, but...
Do you have the time available to spend on this committee?
Well, it's meeting one night a week, right?
And there's homework in between?
Right, the homework, yeah, I have weekends available, nights...
I don't think it's one night a week.
It's whatever the chairman decides it's going to be.
It's whatever we come up with, I think the, I think the last one did twice a month.
Twice a month.
Oh, twice a month?
But there is homework in between.
Yeah.
Any committee meets at all?
Yeah. I, I thought it was going to be...
But if you want to, you can.
I was expecting that.
You can do the homework.
Yeah, I'm committed for once a week, so my one, one night would be homework.
All right, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one up is Scott Jeffrey Rumel.
Well, good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Well, I guess Scott Rumel, 24 Lovett Lane, Chelmsford, Mass. Do you want me to speak first, or do we have any questions about my resume or any of that?
Go ahead, have your...
All right, I got a couple of notes, I'll try to keep it quick, the last probably 10 or 20 years of my professional career have dealt with a lot of big projects, both at the Department of Defense level as well as here at Raytheon Company, so I'm very detail-oriented, very much a team player, very, very comfortable with big data, lots of variables, bringing all those together, so I'm also pretty analytical, that goes with that, if any sensitive information comes up, I currently hold a top-secret security clearance from the DOD, so I'm kind of pretty okay with sensitive data, this afternoon I, I stopped by to talk to Evan and just introduce myself again, talk about what was ahead of us as, as a potential subcommittee, and I agree with what was, what's been said here tonight in terms of understanding what's ahead of us, the research, especially the demographics and how the society's changing and the impact of boomers retiring and millennials coming up, I totally agree with all the input from the town committees, especially the budget, education, police, fire, public works, et cetera, I completely agree, it'll take a team effort to pull this all together and put a plan together that gains consensus, from residents to town reps to selectmen, all the way up to our state representatives, because we want their help too. I'm going to give you a little bit about me, when I started at Raytheon, one of the things we did was a personality assist chart, and there's three graphs here and it talks about who Scott is. So, it's, it's a little old, but it's incredibly accurate, unfortunately.
You sure you want to share that?
I know how to read that.
We use it, I'm going to pass it around after I read it, so you guys know I'm not making this up, we actually use it at Raytheon, so that was, we're communicating and collaborating, when we walk into somebody's office, you have this color chart on their desk, and the colors, green is detail-oriented, red is action-oriented, yellow is inclusion, and blue is policies and procedures, and so the top graph, I'll just read it, is the rational graph, and it says, "This graph represents your preferred style, it reflects your strengths and the roles you enjoy." Scott likes organizational and technical-type roles, enjoys structuring and coordinating assignments, an approach is deliberate and supportive, in managing relies on policies and ability to communicate, is systematic, reliable, and resilient when getting things done. The second chart is socialized, this graph represents the way you learned you should interact with others, it reflects the way you expect others to communicate with you. Scott expects management and others to discuss options and seek agreement, they ought to be helpful and provide a system to use, if approached right, will be cooperative and follow procedures. To overcome problems, will seek alternatives and try to do what is correct. And the bottom graph is called instinctive, this graph represents the basic concerns that must be satisfied to feel confident and effective. Scott has a need to do things right, motivated to use analytical ability to increase predictability and productivity, in decision-making is restrained, develops priorities, and moves forward. I hate to read this, but this is one of my weaknesses, under pressure becomes insistent and is determined to bring closure, so I kind of think becoming insistent is probably not a real strength, but I've learned that, I learned that 15 years ago, so I've been working on that, and I've made great progress. So, that's a little bit about me that you don't really see in my resume and all my experience, right, so that's a little bit about me, I grew up, I moved to Chelmsford a little bit 16 years ago, my two daughters went through the school system, one's an operating nurse, and the other one is a assistant director in the film industry, and I'm lucky enough, they both still live in Chelmsford, and one actually lives at home with me, so I get to enjoy my daughter, I could get to go out to all the different film locations, she's out in Pittsburgh right now at, at what used to be Fort Devens, there's a huge studio out there, and she is working on season two of the Hulu series for Castle Rock. She's done Super Bowl commercials, blah, 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 not to take anything away from the operating room nurse.
Why, you did it.
You talked about a vision and you asked about a... You talked about a vision, and you asked about a vision, and I would tell you, as far as I'm concerned, it's a little too soon to know what those specifics might be. But whatever, whatever that we all come to agreement with, as far as what's best for the community, that's probably what I'm going to support, too. So any questions for me?
You guys have any questions? We'll take it from man again and run right around the...
So we learned a lot about you. Did you take the Myers-Briggs?
I did in high school.
Yeah. You're supposed to be.
Military.
Oh, okay.
For those of you that don't know it, I served in the Navy for 22 years, fast attack submarines, which is where I first got my top-secret clearance.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. 22 years. It was a lot of fun.
What is your interest in serving on the master plan?
Any capacity that I can.
But your interest, I mean...
Why do you want to do it?
Why do you want to be on the master plan?
Well, it actually goes to what I'm doing at Raytheon, right? My responsibilities are really to oversee kind of the top 100 programs and contracts that represent, you know, $20 billion a year in sales. And I have to prepare the company, because I'd like to retire someday, and what we're looking for is the impact of the demographic change and the retirement of the boomers, and the impact that that has on my company, and how the company is going to prepare for the new generation of people, how they learn, how they function, where they function, how they communicate, how they collaborate. So I think on the master plan, a lot of the research has to do with a couple of things. There's always money, right? That's the bottom line. But in addition to that, it's what are the demographics of the town going to change? How are they going to change? How can we invigorate economic development to keep our tax base the way it is or increase it? To, the demographics are probably going to include more younger families. Real estate's pretty expensive in Boston. It gets a little more affordable along the 128, but most kids can't afford houses in Weston or Lexington. So 495 gets to be kind of the outer ring of affordability. And so I think as our town ages in place, there's going to be naturally turnover, and who's going to buy that property? What are they going to bring for requirements to the community in terms of education? And how the community is going to react? And how are we going to afford this? Certainly, I think there's opportunities in the economic development world, not, not to criticize anybody who's done anything to date, that's all good, but I think we just need to reevaluate where we're going and how we can tap into more resources, particularly at the state level.
Anybody else?
I don't know. Did that answer your question?
Are you a TM rep at all, or done any of that?
I have not. This is my first volunteer position.
So no committee at all either?
No committees.
We're all done with questions. I guess we'll move on to thank you, and then move on to the next one.
If anybody wants to see this, they're welcome to leave it, but I do want it back.
You don't want that one in the wild.
William James Murphy. Come on down.
Bill.
Bill, okay, Bill.
So I'm pretty new to Chelmsford. I've only been here a little under a year and a half. And I've served on other town boards. When I was in San Jose, California, where I lived 15 years, I was commissioner on the appeals hearing board, where we heard adverse decisions for code enforcement. So that, I served that for three years. In Virginia, I served on a couple of boards, the Oregon, Oregon Donation Board for the County of Fairfax. And then I was vice chair of the Braddock District Council, which was a group of homeowners associations, mostly planned unit developments or large condominium associations. We had several dozen, and we were the interface. Really, what we did was give access to the elected representatives. That was, that was our main. So the people in those communities could get access to representatives, tell them what was important to them, what was not important to them. Personally, I'm an organic chemist. I don't know if that means anything to you. That's usually really a bad thing, especially if there are any doctors on the panel. That's, that's always a bad thing, because it's the course that kept a lot of them out of medical school or almost kept them out of medical school. So I've done a lot of organic chemistry, analytical chemistry, so I've got a lot of experience in things like remediation technologies and things like that. I spent a lot of time as a government program manager, and then I became a performer, which means instead of giving money to someone to do research, I got money to do research. So I've done both. I'm an R and D guy at heart. I'm a program manager. My specialty is working in interdisciplinary research. When I was growing up, sort of the chemists did their chemistry, and the electrical engineers did their engineering, and the phys, and then somebody kind of put it all together. Well, that's not what we do anymore. We all work together all the time. And so that's what I specialize in, is working with people from different technical backgrounds, almost all, almost all technical folk, except for the editors. And even most of them have some technical background. And so that's my, my experience in trying to get people together to do things like that. I have four children. They're all adults. Two of them live with me, two of them live in Chicago. They're pretty much raised in California, though. So I've lived in a lot of places since, since my wife and I got married. We've lived in New York, California, Michigan, Indiana, Virginia, California, Virginia, and Massachusetts. And I'm not in the military. So that's not unusual for a military veteran, but, but it's not for me, so... And I've also lived in New York, New Jersey, and North Carolina as well, and spent summers in Delaware and Alabama. So I've, I've spent a lot of places, seen a lot of things. I, I became interested in, in planning, because some very good friends of mine were mayors and city councilmen in the Bay Area. And I came to learn, contrary to what I thought, that these kinds of things really do matter. I always thought, oh, this is just not that important, it doesn't really matter, but it really does matter, and the, and the flavor of the town will, in some part, be determined by the decisions that the, the, the planning board makes. So as I read through the 2010 plan, there's, there's not a lot of wiggle room, right? You don't have a lot of land that you don't know what to do with. I mean, you're, you're kind of built in, but you still do have critical choices to make. You have to decide whether you're going to have high-density housing or low-density housing, and what does that mean? Because I look, as I drive around Chelmsford and I look at the prices of houses, I just don't know how young people are going to be able to afford to live here and raise their families. It's a real concern. You have to decide whether, in, in the plan, you talked about a rail, commuter rail in Chelmsford. That's a big deal. That, 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 that gives people access to Boston, but what it also does, it's going to raise your housing prices. It's just going to happen. I mean, I've seen in DC, when I lived in DC, whenever they opened the new stations, and now even the Bay Area, there are, the BART is now coming down to San Jose, and the houses near the BART station are, are rising faster than the houses every place else. So there's really great benefits, and there's really big drawbacks. And I, I'd love to tell you that what the right answer is, I don't know what the right answer is. And I don't know what the people of Chelmsford want. I don't really know what kind of town they want to have. I just know that from reading the paper and looking at that 2010 report, which granted is nine years old, is that I, I think there's, there's some anxiety about what to do. But I think it matters a great deal what we do. Not making a decision is making a decision, too. So I, I think that, that's important. So I, that's, I don't really think I have much else to add. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to.
Want to run around and throw some questions out? I'll throw one out. Do you plan on sticking around Chelmsford?
Right, okay, so, yeah. Let me tell, let me tell you what happened. So when I, when I made this application, I was employed in Burlington, and I got laid off. And I just got a job to, last week. I'm going to work at Draper in Cambridge, in Cambridge, Draper Technologies. So...
You're not going to like the commute.
Yeah, you know, you know, but...
I've done it.
But I lived in the Bay Area, and I lived in DC. It's no worse than that. I, it's really, it's, you know, I mean...
It's the last two miles.
Yeah. I, I, it'll, it'll only take me 45 minutes in the morning, because I get, get to work very, very early at the end of the day. Now that I don't have to get to ball fields, I'm not too worried. I get home when I get home. But anyway, so, yeah, my, my intention is that I'm going to retire from this company when I'm in my 70s. That's my goal.
That's where I got on.
And so, but will that happen? I don't know. I mean, you know, and, and Scott could share this with you, when, when you work in the contract research world, there are no certainties at all. You know, one election can change everything, and entire programs can get eliminated, and so...
Yep.
And unfortunately, if you're an engineer, there are a lot of opportunities in this area to do the kind of work that I do in the defense, intelligence, and homeland security communities. As a chemist, not so much. There's a lot of biotech and pharma jobs here, but I can't work in that. Nobody's going to hire me in that field, because that's not my field. So even though I think I could do that, they don't, and, and I wouldn't hire me either. Don't, I'm not, I'm not...
I like your honesty.
But, yeah, I mean, you could hire me or someone just like me with 30 years in the pharmaceutical, and who are you going to hire? It makes good sense. But I still don't like it. But it's true. So that, that's our intention, is to stay here.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have no questions.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next up is going to be James Kelsey.
I'm Jim Kelsey, 26 Woodlawn Ave. I'm the current chairman of BPAC. So I've been on BPAC for six or seven years. I was part of the committee that did the review on the open space, so the open space committee. We completed that work last year. I've been in Chelmsford for 24 years now. I'm an engineer by training, but currently I'm a director of one of the MIT laboratories. It's an old linear accelerator, Adams measure.
Yeah.
So, so I, you know, I'm used to working giant collaborations, all sorts of people from different, you know, coming from different positions. I usually, you know, I've been a director or manager for a long time, so I'm used to getting people to collaborate and work towards a goal. On BPAC, we've did, you know, my, one of my main reasons for wanting to be on this committee is that we spent about two years of extra sessions at BPAC putting together a master plan for bicycles and pedestrians, which wasn't included in the original 2010 master plan. And so I wanted to follow through on that and, you know, implement that. Obviously, we have to update it. We've already talked about starting to have extra meetings again to update the plan, because it's two or three years old now, and you've got electric scooters and all sorts of other things going on. I've worked closely with Steve Johnley and Gary Persicetti on, you know, various, we meet once a year to talk about various pedestrian and bicycle, you know, accessibility, sidewalks, that type of thing, and the bike trail maintaining. And, you know, we actually, during my tenure there, we've got a budget for maintenance on the bike trail, and we're currently investigating doing some major reconstruction along sections, because we're starting to get root incursion, so you see the trail breaking up. I guess that's about it, so...
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Jim? Me and none?
Not a town rep.
Going to stick around for a while, obviously?
Yeah, no. I've been here 24 years. I'm retiring here, and my kids are all gone, which is great. It's nice having an empty house. Are you saying you're glad to see them go? I like seeing them occasionally.
Exactly. All right. Very good. Thank you for coming up. Next one up, Glenn Diggs.
Hey, Glenn. Glenn Diggs, 220 Wellman Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss my candidacy for the position. First, I'll give you my past involvement in the town. I'm a 20-year resident. Three years, I was on the town meeting, I was a town meeting representative. Three years, I was a member of the Board of Selectmen. I feel that part that goes with being on the Board of Selectmen is that you gain the knowledge of kind of the pulse of the town, of what's going on, and also a knowledge of all the various committees in town, which would eventually be involved in coming up with the new master plan. As far as personal, I'm the type of person that once they make a commitment, they stick to it. I missed one Board of Selectmen meeting in three years. I've also been to numerous meetings aside of that. The Board of Selectmen meets every two weeks, but it's normal to be out two, three, four nights a week doing town business. I feel that I am, have excellent organization skills. I've been a manager in a variety of companies in a variety of capacities. I've always been open to alternative viewpoints, and sometimes if I sense there is one out there, but people are not bringing it forward, I kind of push them to get that opposing viewpoint out there, because you never know exactly what you're going to learn. And I always believe that a collaborative decision is always the best decision, that bringing all the parties together and making a group decision usually will get you in the right place at the right time, always. Considering the job at hand, I understand the overall makeup of the master plan. There is about a 60-page executive summary, which really is the meat and potatoes of what people read and contains the verbatim recommendations. There's also 500 pages of detail. A lot of that's been created by MCOG, that have been, has been a partner in doing these kind of things in various towns. And that, I, I would like to say, in, as a final statement, there is a balance. In creating the master plan, there's a certain balance between the quality of life and residential and commercial interests in the town, in that I believe the master plan will contain the recommendations that will help that play out for the next 10 years. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions for Glenn?
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn.
All right. Last and not least is Joe Ready.
Joe Ready, resident, 9 Turnpike Road. Just want to thank the members of the planning board for allowing me to speak tonight. I sincerely am interested in participating in the master plan committee. The master plan is obviously vital to the community as a resource for future planning. I'm personally interested in all facets of planning. As a father of four children, business owner, residential and commercial property owner, community activist, I'm looking at the overall picture from many different hats, and my motivation, though, for applying for this committee is because I'm very much interested in taking an objective viewpoint with meeting with residents, boards, committees, et cetera, to understand their visions, their ideas, their concerns, and then working collaboratively as a group to pull that information together to make a cohesive master plan document. It's one of the reasons I run our local cable-access TV show, Town Talk, to help people share and inform the community of a wide variety of topics. I have a core foundation, understanding of our zoning bylaws. I've read probably all of chapter 195, cover to cover. I've served as a town meeting rep in precincts 1, 3, and 7, on and off since 2000, which serves a large part of the community. And during that time period, I've had the opportunity of being a small vote on many of the zoning changes that have taken place as a result of prior master plans and planning board initiatives. I've also spent a lot of time reading through historical town meetings dating back to the 1950s to get a flavor of how Chelmsford has evolved over the years. I've had the unique opportunity of serving on the Economic Development Commission with Donald, and enjoyed the opportunity to present our vision then to the 2010 master plan committee, which later became fruit for thought and components for both the CEIOD and the BAOD. The areas I'm most passionate about are the preservation of natural, cultural, and historic resources, schools, open space and recreation, and transportation. I'm particularly interested in how we can save historic structures, how we can address traffic and parking issues that have plagued areas of our community for generations, and how we can create through implementation a highly desirable and inclusive community for all residents. With that being said, you have an outstanding group of applicants for this committee, of which I'm sure you can't go wrong. I just kindly ask you to consider me, and know that I didn't take applying for this committee lightly, and I've put a lot of thought and consideration into the time and commitment that it'll take to get this right, and I appreciate your time.
Do we have any questions for Joe?
Are you willing to take Scott's personality test?
I don't know if I'd do as well.
Joe, are you on any committees right now?
I'm not on any committees. The only committee I've actually ever served on was the Economic Development Commission, and I was very passionate about it, and Donald can tell you that when I lost that passion, I stepped down, and this is something that I've been passionate about for probably over 10 years. You know, I, I remember back when Phil Iliopolis and George Zoharulis and Jim Lane of... You know, I, I remember back when Phil Iliopolis and George Zaharulis and Jim Lane of most people, you know, there's, there were so many great people on that committee, but, but those are people that stood out to me as people that put a lot of time and effort and thought into that master plan. And I know that, you know, I've spoken to a lot of people in the community, obviously, but, you know, there was a lot of things that, that may not have been accomplished from that plan that, that could still be applicable today. And so I don't, you know, again, I don't think it's an entire rework. I think it's, you know, looking at what we have, building upon that, and really taking what residents and other people on other boards and committees have and understanding what they want to do and really trying to make that the, it has nothing to do with me and my vision particularly. It's more about what other people's visions are and how we can make that work, so.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think probably the easiest way to do this.
Can I make a statement? Before we get going on this, I'd like to thank all the people that have applied because this is really a, a really good selection of people. This is a very hard decision to make. Very qualified group of people that come up and I appreciate people trying to volunteer this down.
I would add, if I had $100 million bucks and a good idea, it looks like it'd make a very good startup.
Yeah.
But I don't.
What, a good idea?
No, but actually, this, this is the kind of talent pool that makes, that makes a small startup take off. All right, with that being said, we got to pick two. I'm doing one at a time. Does somebody want to nominate somebody?
Glenn, do you want to do a single nomination or do you want to give everybody two votes and see who gets the most?
I think it'd probably be easier to just do a single, the single nomination. Probably be quicker and more, more streamlined.
It's going to be interesting.
I think that's going to be tough.
It's going to be tough.
I think that's going to be tough. I think we're better off with a multi-vote.
Yeah, this is almost one of these spots where ranked voting.
Ranked voting.
Yeah, well, Maine's got it.
I honestly think that we'll do better with it.
Okay. What's everybody else think on that?
I've never had a pool of so many talented people to pick from in my life.
That's it.
Could we bring them all up?
They could all come to the meeting.
Yeah, we'd love to have them.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's another point. I made it earlier, but I'd like to make it again because I'm not a member of this committee, but you can bet I'm going to be there. So there's nothing, nothing to get, these, these are open meetings like any others. Count them out? You want to do it that way? Okay, I think that. Why don't we do that way? Would everybody write down two names?
Write down two names and let Colleen add them up.
Colleen add them up and. And then we'll consider the final. Then we'll consider the finals and vote on them.
We have an extra here.
That's not very transparent.
That's not very transparent.
Put our name on it?
We can put our names on them if you want.
I don't care.
Oh, you want to, yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Okay. Everybody gets one?
Use the back of them. This is tough.
So you're just going to write, you're going to write two names?
Names.
Do you guys need piece of paper?
We got a bunch of them.
The back of one. I'd like to be the one supplying the town with paper.
Should we, we should write our name as well, right?
Yeah.
So we know.
Yeah, so you know where it came from.
And these can go in the record. I mean, there's no reason these should not be in the record.
That's right. Wow. Who's my sat?
Feel like I'm on Survivor.
I know. This is a tough choice. This is a really tough choice.
We get that big gong in the corner?
Yeah.
I'm sure I can find something on my phone.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, write your name on the bottom.
Pass them all to, pass them all this way and. Get them. Keep them coming. There you go. Sorry. God, I wish you could. That's probably the easiest way to do it.
There we go.
And if anybody wants to come up and see how anybody voted afterwards, they want them.
You can put it in the minutes.
You can put it in the minutes.
Stick a table in the minutes.
Transparency.
But I think it's the easiest way to, with, with this many candidates, I just think it's the easiest way to do it.
Everybody thinking of trying to.
Yeah.
Nope.
It's much easier to tell the truth. You don't have to remember.
Exactly. Exactly.
So then if you have a tie, you go into an open vote.
Yeah, then we go to an open vote.
That's easy enough. And we'll just throw the dice out on the floor and. Yeah. I'm thinking, this has got, this has got the making of a little, you know, electromechanical startup with a medical spin.
Don't forget the nuclear guy.
Yeah. So what do we get after this? Minutes? Just minutes.
Hey, what you doing now?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Yeah, we'll do the, do the minutes while we're waiting on Colleen to tally up. February 27?
Attack the agenda.
Hey, we're 1999. We're almost. Those are poking you, Colleen.
Glenn, don't go there. Just don't go there.
Yeah, I've read them. I'm good. Yep, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good with them.
There we go.
So let me know when you need a motion. Okay. Dawn, did you get, did you look at the minutes? You good with the minutes? Okay, we can do a motion. Move to accept the minutes of February 27, 2019 as presented. Second. We got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that's off the table.
Well, you're running a very efficient meeting.
Hey, crack that whip. Yeah.
I think they're going to be coming up on that. They're going to be, because that's what she was just talking about. They're going to bring them to Bay doing everything else for it, yeah.
As soon as the selectmen pick their.
That stuff right there, which is a good part about George being on the committee. He has such a good relationship with NEMCOG.
I'm just not, well, because, you know, dealing with.
NEMCOG really has a lot of.
No matter which one we get in this group, you're not doing wrong. There's so much talent out there. It's unbelievable. Well, Chelmsford is amazingly blessed with competent people. Well, okay, there's some on the other side, too. We got, we got our tally?
We do.
All right.
We have a tie for first.
You want a drum roll?
Okay.
That means those, those would be the two, if it's a tie for first.
Yes, so there's a tie for first and it's clearly, so Scott Rommel.
Scott.
Scott. You got it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Joe Ready.
Hey, Joe. Congratulations.
So you guys want to make a motion to a point?
Yeah.
The two of them together, you can do it at once.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And, and everybody else? And thank everybody. And come to the meetings. You guys all are very, very well qualified on this and it's a tough choice to make, but.
Hopefully somebody will take, will get more town meeting reps and.
Yeah. Yep. Really good.
I got another motion.
You got another motion. What's that?
Your turn.
Next meeting first.
Oh, no, 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 you can't adjourn until we have another meeting.
Plan the next meeting first.
When is the next meeting, Colleen? It's two weeks from tonight, 24th.
24th.
Uh, Colleen, do you, do you have any idea what we have on that agenda yet?
Um, don't believe, there's some, there's a couple of things that are coming in. They're only coming in now and I need them up.
Okay, gotcha.
So I don't really have that much for the next meeting outside of, I think I even have an A and R.
So you're looking at a light meeting?
Nothing major.
If, if we have a light meeting, I'd like to take and.
You're so good.
I'm just going to get that A and R.
Try to have a discussion among the board members.
That's actually worth reading.
I know.
We don't do that many big A and Rs.
But it's definitely.
Our vision for the future now that we've got our 10%, how should we be handling these things as they come in and maybe try to get a more, just get it, get an opinion of from[1670.62]